A very warm welcome to this, the fifth tie in the round of 16 of the Sports for Business Super Quiz for 2020. We're joined this morning by two teams from Dublin City Council's Sports and Wellbeing Partnership and from Core sponsorship. We've had four rounds of the tournament so far, and we will be continuing two a week all the way up until the grand final on July the 15th. Hopefully, one of these two teams here today with us is going to get to that point as well. So without further ado, let's meet the teams. And first of all, the team captain for Dublin City Council, Nuala O'Donovan.
Hi guys, I'm Nuala, Sport Inclusion and Integration Officer with the Dublin City Sport and Wellbeing Partnership, joined today by Owen and Alan. I think we're all really looking forward to a little bit of organised fun and a little bit of healthy competition. So I'll let the lads introduce themselves there a bit more.
My name's Owen Leonard, I'm on the Euro 2020 Project Office for Dublin City Council, looking forward to today, should be a good crack.
And my name's Alan Moran, I'm working alongside Owen at the Dublin City Council Sports Project Office, mainly working on Euro 2020 and also the redevelopment of Dalymount Park.
And then over to the Core sponsorship team, Phil, you want to say hello?
Hi guys, I'm Phil Green, Client Manager with Core sponsorship, really enjoying the quiz so far, been enjoying the high standard and looking forward to lowering that bar a little bit today.
Sarah, I am Senior Media Sponsor Manager in Core sponsorship, and my specialist subject is definitely not sport, so I'm here for the general knowledge questions.
And Noel Martin, Intelligence Director from Core sponsorship, specialised topics would be Galway and Arsenal in 1998, so looking forward to both of those.
Great, well a very warm welcome to you all. It's great to have the guys from the Euro 2020 team here today. Well, it probably would be better if you were a little bit busier actually, sort of getting down to brass tacks of organising the tournament.
That's true.
We are where we are, and 12 months' time from this date, we will be on the eve of the tournament again. So just to run through, the format of the tournament is that there are eight rounds of three questions across a number of different themes. In order to get into each of those rounds, the team have to get closest to a big number question, which I'll ask, and which each of the team members will hold up their answer to it. Closest to it wins the prize of being able to either correctly answer the three questions or embarrass themselves by getting them hopelessly wrong and handing it over to the opposition. If you get the big number question right, you score two points. If you get the answer right on your round of questions, it's worth five. And if it goes over to the opposition and they score on the rebound, that's worth three points. So without further ado then, let's get underway with round five of the round of 16. And the first round is our general knowledge question. The big number question first of all is, can you tell me as close as you can to the overall attendance figure for the 2019 SSE Etricity League Premier Division? So everybody that crossed the threshold in the Premier Division of the SSE Etricity League in the 2019 season. And I'll count you in before you raise your numbers up to the screens. I'll count you in from three, two, one. And the numbers you've got, 500,350, 202, 145, 650. And can you just call out yours there Owen? It's a little bit...
110,000.
110,000. Well, the correct answer was 388,693. So I think that puts Nuala as the closest to it. Is that right? Yep. So two points to Dublin City Council, and we're into the general knowledge questions. The first question, in which month does Donald Trump celebrate his birthday?
Oh, I have no clue.
Yeah, I have no idea either.
I know he's 73, that's a bit weird.
Okay, so it's a one in 12 guess, but it's worth a shot.
I feel like he's been 73 for a while, so maybe one of the months coming up.
We go September?
Yeah.
September, final answer on Donald Trump's birthday. I'm not sure that too many of us will be celebrating it with him, but that is incorrect, I'm afraid. So it goes back over to our general knowledge specialist, Sarah Gagin, and the core team. Which month does Donald Trump celebrate his birthday?
Any idea guys? December's in my head for some reason, and I don't know why.
I wouldn't, I haven't a clue.
I happen to go, I was drawn towards August, but if you think, if you're, I would probably go with you more than me, I'll have one.
I don't know where this has come from, but are we happy to say December?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go with December. In fact, his birthday is only three days away, on the 14th of June. No points from that first question. The second question, and again, this is back in the course of Dublin City Council, Tedros Adhanom Gabriel Jesus is the head of which international organisation?
Where did you get the questions off?
Deep recesses in the back of my mind. I'll try the name one more time. Tedros Adhanom Gabriel Jesus, the head of which international organisation?
I'm lost, no clue.
Yeah, it'd be a complete shot in the dark, I've no idea.
Brazilian, what do Brazilians draw?
Capoeira?
Not sure that counts as a major international organisation, but any guess?
What about the Brazilian Football Association or something?
We'll take that. We won't give it to you, but we'll take that. So we'll throw it open now to the Core sponsorship team. Tedros Adhanom Gabriel Jesus, head of which international organisation?
Do you guys know?
The IMF is in my head.
I think I can have it.
Oh, go on then.
I think it's quite prominent discussions during the current time. I think it's WHO.
Yeah, I would have said WHO or OPEC, or my two.
Sarah is the specialist, so we'll go with her answer of the World Health Organisation, and that is correct. So there's three points on the board, three points to the Core sponsorship team. He joined the organisation in 2017, and he's Irishman Mike Lynch's boss, and not Donald Trump's favourite person. Okay, that's it for the Donald Trump, he's out of this competition now.
Yeah.
And question three, back to Dublin City Council again. What is the name of the machine commonly known in movies and TV programmes and everything else as a lie detector? What's the name of the machine?
Oh.
It's not Nuala or Alan or Owen or something like that, it's actually a technical name on the machine.
Polygraph.
We take polygraph as the answer, and that puts Dublin City Council up and running with the correct answer, well done. Okay, so at the end of the first round then, with your starter question and that one correct answer, Dublin City Council on seven, and Core sponsorship are on three. So into round two, and it's the popular culture round, but we'll start off with sport. How many individuals have won golf's Open Championship on more than one occasion? So how many golfers have won the Open Championship on more than one occasion? Obviously Shane Lowry doesn't count in that group yet, but there is an Irishman in there. Pori Carrington is one of this number, and I'll count you down from three to one. So I guess it's four, 17, seven, 17. Owen, again, can you just call out your number?
Eight.
Eight. And Sarah, what was yours?
Four.
Four. Okay, it's a tie, but it's a tie between two from Core sponsorship. You guessed 17, the correct answer is actually 27. Pori is the only Irishman. Okay, so that's two points for you on the board, and the first question in the popular culture round. What series did Normal People Overtake as the most streamed entertainment show on the RTE Player over the last number of weeks? Before Normal People came along, what was the series that held that record?
I think Phil.
Well, I'm between two. I think it's Love, Hate or Room to Improve.
Oh. Oh, I'd probably go Love, Hate.
Yeah, so that was my gut on us.
Okay, we'll go with Love, Hate. Brilliant series. Not watched by as many people on the Player though as this. Dublin City Council, any guess?
I had no clue, but now I feel like I should say Room to Improve.
That would be the proverbial own goal there, and it's back up his head.
Oh, or, do you have any idea?
Yeah, well my gut would have been Love, Hate, so I'm happy to go with Room to Improve.
I would have been the same.
Okay.
First people love houses, let's go over it.
Okay. Happy to go with it, unhappy at the fact that it's the wrong answer. The correct answer is actually Young Offenders.
Oh, okay.
I know, it's obvious when you remember back. Okay, question two, and again, this is for Core sponsorship first of all. Which movie director was in charge of the opening ceremony of the London 2012 Olympic Games?
Yeah, go for Phil. Yeah, Danny Boyle.
Go with Danny Boyle, Danny Boyle is the correct answer, well done. And question three, which Irish actor played the character of Dumbledore in the first Harry Potter movie?
We were talking about him this morning though.
Were we?
Yeah, with Sarah Gagin's question about Liz Taylor.
Is that him?
Yeah.
The one that she married twice?
Yeah.
Oh, great, Richard Burton.
Going with Richard Burton?
Sorry, did you say Irish actor? Well, you know, Richard Burton as well.
Okay, and then...
Patrick.
I know we've finished playing us, which doesn't help. I know who it was for sure.
Sorry, Tom Cruise, is it?
No, it's not, no, no. He was in it for us.
Dumbledore.
No, and I don't know who ended up playing him. I don't know, it's gone then for me, I thought it was him.
No? Go with Richard Burton on the basis that I might have got my nationalities wrong?
Yeah.
Okay, you're wrong. Sorry about that. Over to Dublin City Council, any clues? The first Harry Potter movie, the character of Dumbledore was played by?
I think it's Richard Harris guys.
Yeah, I think it's Richard Harris as well.
Okay.
Richard Harris, you were so close, Core, you were so close. Richard Harris is the correct answer. So that's three on the board for Team Dublin City Council. So that's the end of round two, and we now sit in Dublin City Council with 10 points, and Core sponsorship on 10 points. Closest we've been at the quarter point of the game. Round three, we're into general sporting knowledge. Coventry City have been declared the winners of the English Football League Division One. The season has been brought to a quicker end than many of the other leagues. How many points had they on the board when the season came to a conclusion? So they would be playing in the championship next year. Will be at the championship, will have to be played out to see who they will replace in terms of relegation. The number of points they had on the board when the season came to an end, I'll count you in from three to one. 37, 68, 61, 73, 53, 31. And this is going to Noel Martin, and he was only one out. The actual number of points they had was 67. Five points clear at the top, and now the official champions of the English Football League Division One, which means that Core have got an opportunity to go ahead in the tie. Okay, question one, and this is general sporting knowledge. How many non-Americans have won the US Masters in the last decade? How many non-Americans have won the US Masters in the last decade?
Let's think now.
Been trying to say more rather than less.
Okay, I see for a number.
You go for a number, Nolly. I'm getting mind blocked here, you go for a number.
I've seen people like Baba win it though. Yeah, I think it's very close to half, Phil.
Okay, we'll go exactly half of five, why not?
Go with five?
Yeah.
Sadly, not the case. Dublin City Council, how many non-Americans have won the US Masters in the last decade?
Any idea?
No, a little part of me thinks it could be a bit of a trick question, and it could be zero, but I think it's low anyway.
Well, I have no clue, so you can take a shot.
I think that was one of the couple of times, I mean, Tiger won a pass, sorry. Three or four, I would have said, maybe.
What do we go with?
I know there's one of the majors that the Europeans don't have a great record in recently, that's probably it.
You go, you go, whatever you think.
All right, let's say zero then.
Go with zero. What a low opinion of me that you have, that you'd think I'd put in a trick question like that. Or maybe you just know me. No, the answer is actually four. Sergio Garcia, Danny Willis, Adam Scott and Charles Swartzel from South Africa. So four it was. And the second question in the general sporting knowledge round, which tennis player, not currently still competing, has won the fourth most Grand Slam titles in history in the men's game? So first, second and third are all still competing. The fourth most successful tennis player has won 14 Grand Slam titles, who is he?
Do you think it is, Nolly?
I don't know if Courier got that high, but he's the one that sprung to mind. But I don't know if he got that high.
What about Sampras?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going, Sarah, any thoughts on Sampras?
I was gonna say, I'm actually not even gonna embarrass myself on my guess, so yeah, go ahead.
Very wise. Okay, we're going with Pete Sampras, and Pete Sampras is the correct answer. Five points on the board. Okay, and question three, again, back in the course of Core. After Cork, Dublin and Kilkenny, which county has won the most All-Ireland Senior Camogie Championship titles?
I think I know the answer, but I'm not entirely certain.
I would have known the top three, Phil, but I'd be guessing at four. I know who it isn't, if that makes... Actually, if you say to my jog of memory.
I think it's Wexford. There's no other county, I think, the other two county I could think of, that it might be. But Wexford was the first one that came to my head.
Yeah, I know two it's not, if that makes sense. And it's not one of the one you mentioned.
That narrows it down to 27 then.
You can say no, guys. We don't mind.
Don't think, I don't think I have a better guess than yours.
Yeah, okay, we'll go Wexford.
We go with Wexford, and we'll go with another five points. It was indeed Wexford, who won it on seven occasions. Jeez, that would have been tough now if you'd gone with something else.
I was so close to switching to Limerick, I was this close.
Okay, so after round three then, Core move on to 22, and Dublin City Council nestling in behind now with 10. Okay, the history round, but again, the first number question is a sporting one. In the 2018 AFL Grand Final, West Coast beat Collingwood, how many total points were scored in the game? So you don't need to break it down in terms of goals and points, just the total number of points that were scored in the game. If anybody was there, we'll give you a bonus point, but you have to produce the ticket live on air. So we'll count you in with your number on how many total points there were in the game from three to one.
Oh, I'm way off.
189158. And the correct answer, and I tell you this, Noel Martin boy is playing a bit of a blinder over there. The correct answer is 153, it was 79 to 74. So another two points there. Don't worry, Dublin City Council, these things have a habit of coming back around in the second half. But for now, the history round, to bring us into the halfway point. Question one, who did George W Bush defeat in the 2000 US presidential election? We always remember the winners.
What do you think guys?
I'd be looking at Phil for this.
I think the person I'm thinking of was the next election on, and I was a small bit young to remember this one. Like, I've got, I've got one name, so I may as well say it in conversation, that Al Gore was my name, but I'm pretty sure he was the next election on. But...
Yeah, how would have him or... Did Quail run for election? Did he make it that far?
I would be happy to go with it, because I don't think my own is right, but...
You think Gore ran four years later, yeah?
I think so, but...
I can offer no help.
Even between those two, sorry? What do you think, sorry, between Quail or Gore? Gore is definitely a problem.
Um. Well, Phil doesn't think he's right. He, it probably isn't, because he'd be confident if he thought it was right.
Yeah, Gore was the, that was the whole shared vote.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm gonna make an executive decision. I gotta stick with Phil.
Go on.
Just.
Okay, so we'll go with Al Gore, and that wins you five points.
Go Phil!
Well done guys.
Good executive coaching there, very well done. Well done Phil, well done Sarah. Okay, question two, in which country was Greenpeace founded way back in 1971? So none of us were probably there. Which country of the world was Greenpeace founded?
Sorry, that's my dog barking.
I have a guess, but it's a guess.
What are you thinking?
Canada.
Okay, I'd know better advance, I was thinking Britain, and I was thinking Scandinavia, getting specific kind of the same countries.
Sarah's asking Missy.
I'm happy for you to go with your guess, because Sarah, what do you or Missy think?
I don't know, she's still going. I'll go whatever, you said, what did you say, Canada?
Yeah, just a guess.
Yeah, we'll go with it.
Okay, go with Canada. Another five points. Tell you what, you're dragging them out of the deep recesses. Okay, and the third question, and it's relating to the Hundred Years' War. There's three choices to this. Was the Hundred Years' War 100 years long?
Oh.
Was it less than 100 years, or was it more?
That was the last one, was it more, yeah?
I think it's more, I think it was 101 years.
I don't think it was 100. I think that's...
I'm pretty happy, yeah. Yeah.
For some reason, I think it's 101 years.
I'm happy for you for us to bash with that.
Like, it's weird if it lasts to call it 100. It's more, it just seems more reasonable if it's 101 to call it 100. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think I've read somewhere that it's like, it's 101 or like 110, but I'm not sure.
You're ahead of us there, Sarah, I think in terms of...
Research.
Yeah.
Knowledge.
Knowledge.
Okay, so what are we gonna go with?
More.
Yeah, more.
We go with more, it lasted for 116 years.
More is good.
So congratulations, you managed to score 17 points in that round without actually knowing that you were right on any of the answers, which is a particularly impressive performance. And that moves you along to 39 points, and Dublin City Council still there on 10. But we've had bigger comebacks, we've had bigger deficits overturned than that, so have no fear. Okay, we move into round five. It's a specific year of sport. The specific year, as chosen by me in consultation with my trusty assistant, Alexa, is the year 2000. Okay, but in order to get there, in case you're thriving on your knowledge of the year 2000 in sporting terms, how many medals did the United States win at the Olympic Games of that year, which were held in Sydney? So how many medals in total? Gold, silver and bronze, they all count as one piece of precious metal. And I'm gonna count you in from three...
Hang on, I've already, I changed my mind.
I just paused. Two, one. Okay. 115, 12, 80, 94, 81. And what are you on there, Owen? 95? Okay, the correct answer was 93, so Owen and Alan between them there. Great backup, but there you go. Could this be the start of the second half, Serge? Don't panic, don't panic, Core. Have to get the answers right first. So that's two points on the board, and we move into the year 2000. Okay.
All right, all, you're up.
Which GAA county won the men's Leinster Football Championship in the year 2000?
I knew Al.
Why are you guys too young?
I was 12.
I was eight.
All right, fair enough.
I was nine.
I'm gonna think Leinster. Can't think back to see, to know how strong the Dubs were then. I think they were going through their fallow phase then. I might hazard a guess at Meath maybe?
Meath or Kildare probably.
Meath had a spell where they were quite strong, and I did some good battles with Dublin, maybe around that time. Say Meath.
Go with Meath?
Meath.
Okay, not correct, I'm afraid. Over to Core.
To there.
Kildare, it was.
Ah, sorry, Nuala.
That's all right.
After a replay.
What a great day, I remember it.
Nearly there. Okay, question two, which American tennis player won the Australian Open in the year 2000? The Australian men's Open tennis in January of 2000, which American tennis player?
American. Thinking Americans that were good on hard courts around then. Let's say Jim Courier.
Go with Jim Courier is the final answer, not correct, I'm afraid. Back over to Core.
What do we think guys, outside of my area of expertise?
So the biggies of the time would have been Courier, which I might have guessed. Courier, Sampras, Rodic possibly.
It's a bit early for him maybe, is it?
It is early for Rodic, yeah.
Is Agassi still not around in 2000?
He might be actually, yeah.
For me, it was between Sampras and Agassi, but that's just because they're the two biggest names of American tennis.
I think you're right about Rodic, I think it might have been a bit early, although he was a hardcore guy for sure.
Was Sampras an answer already?
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of thinking not him.
Yeah.
Even definitely zero. So I'd say, yeah, it's maybe Agassi then.
Go with Andre Agassi, worth it for another three points. I'm glad that you think of me as being decent enough not to put the same answer in for two questions. I might just have been under pressure at the time, but no, it was Andre Agassi. So back to Dublin City Council now. The third question, Sonia O'Sullivan won Ireland's only medal at the 2000 Olympics in Sydney. It was a silver medal. What was the distance?
Um. Five, 5000 metres? What do you think guys?
Go with 5000 metres?
I'm pretty sure it was five or 10, so it's, you know, let's go, let's go 5000 metres.
5000 metres is spot on, well done. So seven points there from that round. Five thousand meters is spot on. Well done. So seven points there from that round brings you on to seventeen. Six points for Core from those two rebounds brings you on to forty-five. So three rounds to go. Round six is the geography round, but again, the first question is a, is a baseball related question. How many times have the New York Yankees played in the World Series? The World Series is the equivalent of the All-Ireland final, so they get to becoming either the best or the second best team in the sport in that year. How many times have the New York Yankees played in the World Series? And I'll count you in from three, two, one. So twenty-seven, fifteen, fifty-four, thirty-five, thirty-three, twenty-two. The correct answer is forty, which means that Noel has landed on the bullseye. Well, close enough to the bullseye again anyway, so they won twenty-seven of them, they lost thirteen. So the geography round, um, okay. How many Emirates are there in the United Arab Emirates? You don't have to name them, just the number I'm looking for.
We need, we need our resident expert.
You picked the wrong team today. We've been a member of the team, Finn, who has lived there. And
They didn't qualify for the Euro Championships, even though there are plenty of non-European countries that do seem to compete in Eurovision, but... So that would have made it very easy for Alan and Owen in particular, but they didn't make it. So how many Emirates are there in the United Arab Emirates?
Does anyone have, has a gut on anything at all?
Not usable.
I would think it's around around seven.
Yeah, seven was the number that came to my head.
Yeah, that's a lucky number.
Lucky number.
Seven is a lucky number for Core because that is exactly the number of Emirates that are there.
Well done.
Because my fiance used to live there for two years, so I couldn't name them all off, you know.
Okay.
You kept a very good face on, I didn't know you knew.
Okay, the second question in the geography round, what is the name of the river that flows through Washington DC?
Oh, your man landed the plane on it, didn't he?
Oh, that wasn't...
Yeah.
Oh, did he?
I think I have it.
Nolly, go on.
Um, I think, guys, Potomac, Potomac.
Yeah, that, yeah.
The Potomac River is correct. Well done. And question three, in which Italian province is the city of Perugia in? Which Italian province is home to the city of Perugia?
It's a guess for me.
And I'd be the same as well, but I'm happier to take your guess, I'd say.
What do you think, Phil?
And
Sir, you're gonna tell us if you can there?
Yeah, Sarah, come on.
No, I deftly, no.
What do you think, Nolly?
I was gonna say Umbria, but it's a guess.
I'm happy to go with that. That sounds halfway informed.
Halfway, that's, I wouldn't go further.
One in twenty chance of guessing it right, and he's only gone and got it right with Umbria.
You're on the ball with your guesses.
I know, I would, I would shake your head as well there, Sarah, unless, unless you've got access into my computer through some...
It turns out no, it's good.
But you are the intelligence director, of course.
There you go.
So you're living up on your name anyway.
I still have a job for another day, Rob.
That's an extra seventeen points, so that moves you on to, okay, we're sixty-two, plays seventeen. Um, okay, so round seven. Round seven is the, is the song lyrics question. And my apologies for this to anybody who really doesn't like tennis, but the big number is another tennis question. How many tennis players are there in the United States of America, according to trusted outlet Statista? This is a, this is a very big number, so I think we will be, we will be doing well to get to within a million of this. It's that big a number. How many tennis players are there in the United States? And we will count you in a little bit imaginatively this time, from forty, thirty, fifteen, go. Five point three million, eighteen million. What are you, Nula?
Thirty-nine million.
Thirty-nine million, a hundred and ten million. Incredibly, there are seventeen point six eight million registered tennis players or tennis players in America, so Noel Martin. Intelligent by, title intelligent by practice. Um, okay, so we're into the lyrics round. These are the lyrics from three famous Irish songs. Okay, I will not sing them, I will not read them with any particular cadence, but you will have to guess from which songs they come. The first question is, "Then too, when the evening sun's sinking to rest, sheds its golden light over the sea." Then too, when the evening sun's sinking to rest, sheds its golden light over the sea.
Sarah?
No.
No.
Like I was...
This is very much a guess to much round, all right.
I was gonna say something like Goy Bay, but I don't think it is Goy Bay. It's just... That's just pure, pure guess. I don't have the clue.
It's as good as... I don't have answer.
It's always good to guess that, because if it, if it was right, you'd have been very embarrassed
Yeah.
to have gotten something else. But unfortunately, from your point of view, it was wrong. So back over to Dublin City Council with a chance to steal three points. I'll give it to you one more time. Then too, when the evening sun's sinking to rest, sheds its golden light over the sea.
I have no clue.
Yeah, I have no idea, guys.
Now give us a famous Old Irish song. Anything coming in?
Have you got anything?
Okay, press your answer.
We'll go, the bank's lovely.
The bank's my own lovely Lee. What an astonishing guess, because that is absolutely right.
Well done, Nola.
Okay, the second one, it's back to Core. But the bravest fell and the requiem bell rang mournfully and clear. But the bravest fell and the requiem bell rang mournfully and clear.
I think I noticed one, guys.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's the Foggy Jew.
Foggy Jew, good bit of republican knowledge there from Phil and five points in the bank.
A disclaimer for lots of other comments, Rob.
Traditional knowledge, it's good that we know our own personal histories. Um, and round, question three, hearts of steel and heads unbowing. Hearts of steel and heads unbowing.
Couldn't have put a Bewitched song or Boys On or something.
I'm culturally relevant despite my advancing years. Albeit Bewitched is hardly...
One more time, Rob, please, sorry.
But is it Rob again, sir?
What is this?
Hearts of steel and heads unbowing.
I don't think it's this, like, is it something like Stand Up and Fight's monster now?
Really, yeah?
I don't, like, I...
What I heard, hearts of...
That song.
Yeah.
It's not a Dermot Kennedy song, is it?
I was gonna say, there has to be a Dermot Kennedy song for you somewhere, sir.
We go with, I give you any Dermot Kennedy song. Because it's not a Dermot Kennedy song. So back, so back over to Dublin City Council. Any guess?
I think it's Ireland's Call.
You think it's Ireland's Call? You're absolutely right. It's towards the end of Ireland's Call, by which time everybody is just getting excited about the game, so you don't actually realise they're just singing, but well done, Owen. So another three points in off the board there, which brings you up to twenty-three points. Still lagging a little bit behind because Core have moved on to sixty-nine points. And the final round, the movies round. Okay, in which year did Dublin last win the All-Ireland Camogie Championships? And if two of you get this right, then we'll go to the tiebreaker of the next in line for it. So which year did Dublin last win the All-Ireland Senior Camogie Championships? And again, I'll count you in from three, two, one. The year was twenty fifteen, nineteen ninety-nine, twenty ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three, two thousand and one. So the correct answer there was actually nineteen eighty-four, which means that Owen is closest to the mark, I think, on nineteen ninety-two. So two points there for Dublin City Council. And the three questions in the movies round. The Hunger Games movies are based on the books of which author?
Well, I'd look in my bookshelf behind me.
Surreptitiously, because you've got a virtual screen, we can't tell. Nobody else can look. Author of The Hunger Games books that begat the movies?
Have you read them, Noda?
Yeah, yeah, and it's right behind me and I really wanna turn around.
Okay, everybody just cough and just sort of look away.
I know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
I have no clue, though.
No clue. No. Okay, we'll pass it over. Anybody on the Core team know the author of The Hunger Games series?
I know, does anyone else know?
No.
Go for it.
No, I know the surname is Collins, but the first name Suzanne or Susan, Suzanne, Suzanne Collins.
Okay, Suzanne Collins is absolutely right.
Well done, Sarah.
There she is. You even knew exactly where to go on the bookshelf.
That's so annoying for you. Yeah.
Okay, question two. Um, okay, who played Private Ryan in the movie Saving Private Ryan? So it's back in Dublin City Council. Who played Private Ryan in the movie that was named after the saving of him?
Um. Tom Hanks was the main star in it, but I don't think he was Private Ryan. I'm guessing, do you have any idea, guys?
No.
The one name in my head. Um, but I'm nearly afraid to say it.
Yeah, yeah, I have a name in my head. Has it been in the news a bit recently?
Does he, has he maybe been living in Ireland?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Not in the Dublin City Council area.
Well, maybe in the dark here.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe in the Dunleary Ratt Down area.
Well, look, if we're thinking the same guy, let's go for Matt Damon.
Matt Damon, five points, well done. Um, and the final question, in which country is the movie Cinema Paradiso set? What's the setting for the movie Cinema Paradiso?
My guess would be the Netherlands.
Why?
Paradiso, I think there's like a music venue in the Netherlands called that.
Cool.
Alan is rolling around a little bit there.
Um, no, no, I have no idea, I've never seen it.
No? Okay, lovely logic behind the thinking of it, but not correct on this occasion. So which country was the setting for Cinema Paradiso?
Think of Italy, Phil.
I have no idea, I'm happy.
What do you think, sir?
No idea.
Think of this, Nolly.
Go with Italy. Do yourselves a favour this weekend or in the rain and actually take it out on Netflix or something like that. It is a gorgeous movie and it was set in Italy. So at the end of round eight, another seven points for Dublin City Council moves you on to the um, the not embarrassing total whatsoever of thirty points. Um, but you came up against a team that were on fire today and Core sponsorship scored a record now for the, for the competition so far of seventy-five points. I hope that if there was some luck given in answering some of those big number questions that you haven't used it all up in advance of your place in the quarterfinals, but that is exactly what you have won today. And so our thanks to Nula, to Owen and to Alan from Dublin City Council. Our congratulations to Sarah and to Missy and to Noel and team captain Phil. I know you've been looking forward to this and with good reason, because you are today's winner of the Sport for Business Super Quiz. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Well done, guys, well done.
Very much.
Well done.